Party. Wow. Hello, hello, hello. Could you hear me now? Something definitely wrong with the PA system. Or whatever, the micro system. Anyway, I'll lean back. The board did have an exec session this evening before the meeting to discuss personnel items. So with that, is there any announcements?
The Springford curriculum, oh my. The Springford curriculum and instruction team is happy to provide parents and students with summer resources. Visit the Springford website for fun ideas to help students avoid the summer slide and for suggested summer assignments for high school students. Thank you. This is Juliana Lelley. She is the new student body representative. Hello. It's nice to meet you all. I'm very excited.
That's good. Glad to have you with us. Look forward to some amazing reports, starting in August, I guess?
Next week.
September.
Yep, next week.
Huh?
Next week.
Next week? Oh, great.
Yeah.
All right.
That's the way we like it.
Yeah, right, jump right in, both feet. Okay, public to be heard, agenda items only. We have one action item this evening. Do I have a motion?
Just a moment on that. Mr. Fisgaj, are you going to take that?
Oh, yes. Mr. DeBella, we would ask for a modification to this action item to remove everything from it, starting with the sentence, "The administration further recommends." You will see that there's an installation component to this. This will be coming back, in all likelihood, at next Thursday's meeting. We have to review a component of the contract before it's, before we're able to approve it. So everything else above that, the $400,000 hardware charge, is okay for this agenda. Everything else from "the administration further recommends" should be removed from the action item.
Need to even make the motion this evening, or could it wait till next Thursday? Would it be that much of an impact?
I believe they need to make the motion for the hardware due to the quoting through the Co-Stars program.
Oh, right, right, okay. So, there's a modification to the motion to read all the way up to department's annual operating budget, to stop there. The second part of that, "administration further recommends," approval, is to be removed from the motion. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion second? Any comment? Or questions?
So, Mr. Solicitor, what will be the discussion next week for the administration "further recommend" comment? How is it going to interact with what we're approving tonight?
Right, so the top part of the motion is coming from a particular state contract, which is acceptable. The second part, which is the installation component of it, will be coming through a different state contract vendor. I need to review that particular contract before we can approve it. Not all contracts through that vendor is necessarily approved, so I'd rather have that review before you take action on it.
That is to imply this wasn't reviewed previously?
That is correct.
Any other questions or comment? I just want to, I have to agree with Clinton on this, that was there a reason why it wasn't reviewed previously, or we didn't do it? I mean, because contracts, we should always make sure that they're reviewed and approved by the Solicitor's Office before showing up on the agenda. So with that, do I have, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Post?
No.
Okay. All right, we have one presentation this evening from our college career coordinators, Tricia and Marissa. Oh, Dr. Nugent as well?
Thanks for having us tonight. We've had another very successful year, and we're excited to share some of the news of what we've done this year with you, and some new things, some old things. So first, oh, I've turned on, huh? There we go. Okay, so what we're going to talk about today is what happened in the FPC this year, kind of what the result was, and what was new this year, and what we're going to be focusing on a little bit for next year. So first, we have the different events that we ran this year. This slide probably looks familiar to some of you as what we presented on last year, but there are some new events in there that I just want to highlight. So in October, you see, we added another instant decision day. I believe in December, there's another instant decision day we added on for both Alvernia and Cabrini, private institutions. They were well-attended. We had about a dozen, too, I think Cabrini was a little on the higher end, 18 students who registered for those events. Instant decision days, if you don't know, the student comes in and meets with an admission person, and they give them a decision on the spot. So it's really exciting for our students. In the past, we've done Kutztown. Kutztown was very generous with our students this year, giving us some nice scholarships for them to walk away with. So that was a great one. We're looking forward to doing that again. We also have the Pfizer Field Trip in October, and then you'll see another career-related field trip appearing in March. That's the Vanguard Field Trip. The Pfizer Field Trip, we had about a dozen students participate in. The Vanguard Field Trip, we had about 30 students participate in. Again, career-oriented, so these organizations put together a day of experiences for our students to go and see what technology careers would look like at those institutions. So really exciting for our students, really focused on what different majors would take them into those career paths, which is great, because it's always nice for them to hear about new majors that they can be exploring. I think the next one that we have, how to be competitive and highly selective admission in December, that's something that we definitely plan to continue doing next year. It's an admission presentation, or I'm sorry, a presentation that we do about admission concerning schools that accept less than 30% of students. So you'll hear students talking about the Ivy Leagues, or, you know, any, any school that we don't typically get students into very easily. We talk about what it takes to actually be admitted into those schools. That is open to ninth, 10th, and even 11th grade, even though it's a little late at that point, students to be looking at highly selective admission. So now, while that sounds very early, and it is, it's important, if you're thinking about highly selective admission, to know sort of what they're looking for in advance. So parents are invited to that. It focuses mostly on our gifted population, but it is open to everyone to attend. We also have our, in March, a couple new career-related events with Career Month. So Career Trends Night, I think, was pretty successful for its first year. We had five different panelists from different industries. We had one who was a career counselor at a college. We had a headhunter who was a part of this panel to talk to families about what it takes to be successful in the new job market, and what companies are looking for, so that when students are looking for different majors and trying to plan their futures, they have an idea of what to be looking for to make sure that they're getting the most out of their education. So a lot of great messages given there. We had about 50 people in attendance that night, small numbers, but I think really powerful, and we're going to continue on with that. The Financial Reality Fair was probably my most exciting event this year. We had essentially a large game of life in the gym, and all of our juniors came through in their history classes, and they went through and they picked, you know, do I want to go straight into a career, two-year degree, four-year degree, master's program, doctoral program? And they actually were given a budget sheet that told them not only the average monthly salary for someone with that degree, but also the average monthly bills, and how much gets taken out for insurance, and for taxes, and all these things. So they have this bottom line, then, that they work with, and they walk around, and they visit all of these different tables, and they get to sort of build their life. They get to pick out how expensive their clothes are going to be, how often they want to go to a gym membership, if they want a pet, do they want to live at home, do they want to live in an apartment? And some of them went way over budget, so it was really exciting for them to meet with some financial advisors at the end, to see that they needed to really cut back, and they really got a better feel for how much they would actually have if they got one of those, one of those careers. So I think that was a really cool event. The Pennsylvania Credit Union Association is the one who really helped us with that, so kudos to them for helping out. In April, we also have the Monco Field Trip. This is another new program that we did. So what we've sort of done is create a cohort of students throughout the year. So we started out by really getting all the students who are interested in Monco together to talk about, you know, what does Monco actually look like, how much does it actually cost? There's a lot of kids who think that college just isn't in their future, so making it more approachable for them was great. And then throughout the year, they did placement testing, they had multiple meetings for orientation, and then finally, we actually went to Monco, and they got to sit down and meet with their advisors, register for classes, and get their ID pictures taken. It was a really great trip, and the students, I think, really don't have as much of a hurdle after they graduate. They know that that's already in place, and they're ready to go there. So that was a really cool event that we did. This summer, we have a couple new events coming up, so we are extending our college essay workshop for the summer, because some students are getting started early, so students can come in and meet with us and get some essay tips. We're also doing an added interview workshop over the summer. We found that a lot more students are interviewing for different selective scholarships and different selective colleges, so we want to offer them some tips on that over the summer in case that comes up early in the year. We're also doing Pitt and Penn State application days, so a new application trend is that colleges will be asking students to self-report. You're going to hear that a lot. So what we're going to be doing is providing unofficial transcripts to students and helping them actually do the self-reporting, because it can be a little intimidating to determine how much credit they're getting for everything, and what the actual titles are, and how they're coded. We will also be doing Conquering the Common App again. That's a returning one. It was very successful last year. We had about 40 students attend for each session that we did last year, just going through the Common App, making sure they know what to expect, and navigating Naviance. Naviance is going through a major upgrade over the summer, so making sure that students are well-prepared for that and what it's going to look like. We're going to offer some sessions for students to come in. Decision Day was very successful. I know a few of you were there this year. Our theme was Monsters University. We actually had it in the cafeteria this year, so this is a big space, but we had a big class, so we definitely filled it well. Students got to decorate. They were these little doors, so if you've seen Monsters University, Monsters Inc., they all have these scare doors. So the students got to decorate their doors based on where they're going after they graduate, whether that's career, college. They got lots of celebratory pictures with friends and families. We had Dunkin' Donuts gave us a very generous discount on donuts again this year, so we had some great snacks, and some great large group photos that you can find on the website as well. Testing this year, our numbers are pretty similar to last year. You're seeing it swing back a little bit from ACTs to SATs again. SATs made a big change last year, so the numbers dropped a little bit, and ACT is definitely inflated. Now you're seeing ACTs coming back down, ACTs going back up, just because students are used to the new SAT again. PSATs, those numbers are pretty stable. Our ASVAB numbers have gone up a lot, which is exciting. I hope they keep going up. The ASVAB, a lot of times, there's this big misconception that students think the ASVAB is just for the military. It's actually an excellent test for you to determine your career aptitude, so we've had a lot more students taking it for career aptitude reasons. Processing applications, just to show you all the hard work that our school's been putting in, 331 different colleges this year that students have applied to. We sent over 2,000 transcripts. Those numbers do not include the final transcripts that we just sent today, so there's a lot more to that. And then we had about 1,700 letters of recommendation sent. You can see we have our top five teachers who wrote the most letters, with the top being 119 letters. They're really working hard, so a big thank you to all of our teachers for helping out with that. So just a quick look at the class of 2018. You should have in front of you our list of colleges of where students applied. You'll notice the little asterisk tells you where students have actually attended. Here is our pie chart. We have about 72% of students attending four-year schools, 16% attending two-year schools, 8% are going into the workforce, 2% military, and 1% are looking at a gap year for a variety of different reasons. So it's pretty much on par with last year. We didn't see too much of a change anywhere there. Just to highlight a couple things, our top five institutions, you have Penn State, Temple, West Chester, Pitt, and Kutztown. That's not a big surprise. They are definitely in a lot of people's budgets, and they've been pretty generous with us this year. As I mentioned, Kutztown gave out a lot of scholarships. That was great. Going the distance, we do see students going to a number of different states, really spreading out this year. We had a lot more students applying to the Midwest than we ever had before, and the South Carolina schools are very popular with us, even one student heading all the way out to Washington. So they're definitely choosing different colleges as we move on. Highly selective acceptances, we've had a lot more of those this year. Georgetown, we haven't seen anyone accepted to Georgetown in a long time. That was super exciting. UNC Chapel Hill, kids are dying to get in there. We finally got someone in this year. MIT, West Point. West Point, wow, and even a female student going to West Point, which I think is phenomenal. So definitely some great schools that I wanted to highlight there for you. Self-reported, I do want to stress that this is self-reported. Self-reported, we had that great big number up there of merit scholarships awarded to our students, and also eight full tuition scholarships given to our students. I think that's a really nice, impressive number, so we always like to share that. And new this year, we did a couple things that we talked about last year, some ideas we had, we actually put them into action this year, some FPC how-to videos, thanks to Andrew Rothemal. He was a huge help in this, putting together how to actually put the request in for letters of recommendation, how to match your Common App with Naviance, how to send SAT scores, how to send senior transcripts. This is all really important stuff, because the students only get to meet with us for a limited amount of time, so if they forget, or their parents are trying to help them, this is a great resource for them. Also, another great resource with the help of Erin Crew, thank you for all your support. We did put together a pretty nice Future Planning Center webpage with some great resources. Those are just some snapshots from it, so you can see all of the different folders that we have on there, or dropdown menus, along with sections for each grade level. So I think that that's been pretty successful. We've got some nice feedback about that. And that's all I have. So if anybody has any questions?
Thank you. I mean, that was very impressive. I mean, just seeing, is this on now? Could you hear me? Just seeing the vast array of universities that the kids are applying to, as well as the word "accepted." I mean, I know probably eight, nine years ago, this list was probably a lot shorter, you know, so over time, it's really, you know, and then I know, talking with kids, you know, students at the different banquets and, you know, award nights that we have, and just listening as well, is where they're going and their majors. It's incredible what's going on here at Springford. And like you said, you know, female going to West Point, I think that's great. I know she's really excited about her.
Oh, yeah.
I guess they call that commission, is that commission, when they go to West Point, or I guess?
It's the appointment.
Appointment, yeah.
Yeah.
So, one of the, I heard, I guess this is what, our fourth, fifth year with Signing Day?
Decision Day.
Decision Day, I mean?
Yeah, Decision Day.
Yeah.
I guess it's the fourth year?
Fourth year.
I think it's the fourth year, because it was one year before I got here.
So, and again, the parents were highly, you know, praising the event, and I'm glad we moved it into the, into here, because I think the last one we had was really jammed in the, in your career center. One, I don't know if you're able to do, and I actually saw this on one of the news shows where there was a high school, I forget where it was at, did a very similar thing to what we're doing here, but one of the, one of the things that they did as well is they, they recognized or honored the students that went right into the workforce. So they invited, depending on, you know, where they were going, they invited the employer in, you know, if they wanted to be part of the day as well, or, you know, because there was, there was kids that got apprenticeships, and whatever it may be, so it was kind of really interesting. And I know that you pointed out that we had, I think it was 54 students that went right into the workforce.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that's, I don't know if you do, could I make it this year, but I don't know if you do anything special for?
We don't, we don't really call out any specific group, but we did have a lot attend, especially our Wawa kids. They're super proud. They wear their Wawa gear in here.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
So, yeah, and they do have a good future in store, too.
Well, yeah, and I guess, you know, a couple years ago, when we were doing this, it was kind of skipped that we had a lot of kids going into the military, and it kind of felt like, a lot of emphasis was put on the university, the college career path, and they, and then, so we, we wanted to make sure that they, it was all, you know, again, it comes back to it's all-inclusive. So the students that are going right into the workforce, that's, that's just, that's a great decision as well. I mean, there's, you know, there's no bad decision when you look up there as far as what the students are doing, so.
I think that's a big reason why we changed it from Signing Day to Decision Day, too, to try and make it more inclusive. But any ideas about making it more inclusive, please feel free to send them.
Well, I know, I think it's, you guys are doing a great job. I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there that I saw this, and it was, they, they recognized the kids, and, you know, because they don't, well, I didn't know that there was kids that showed up and had their Wawa shirts on, so like you said, they're very proud of that. So it's, it's good, because it's a good career as well for, for kids to go on and eventually manage. There's Wawas everywhere, so I know that they have a great management program. So, but thank you, it was a great presentation.
I love, I actually have a daughter who's a junior, and Nunda, you can probably talk about as well, the affair that, that Ms. Falco talked about. It was very incredible when, when my daughter came home and talked about that day that they walked around with the game of life.
Yeah.
And, and I think that it is a reminder to these folks that when you leave here, there's other things that happen besides just your next step, and it is looking into where's that going to take you? And we talk about that all the time, when we talk about college readiness, or career readiness, or readiness after Springford, and what does that look like? And, and I look over at Mrs. Bass, because that's a conversation that we have very regularly. What are we looking for? What does it look like to be a Springford student? And I think that as you continue to add to this, we continue to see great things come out of it, and I love the fact that, you know, you're continuing to look for ways to enhance your Future Planning Center, the fact that you guys are so focused in working with these folks over the summer, working on those essays, and the Common App, and the additional applications, and yes, all this new stuff that's coming down the road with this self-reporting. I've heard that a couple of times now, from a couple of different places, so that's going to be, I think, a new hurdle for our students to, to come, overcome, and with your help, I'm sure it'll be a very smooth transition for them. So thank you for all you do, and, and I do know that even since, you know, both of you have been here, this list of colleges and matriculations, and the areas that we're seeing kids apply to continues to grow and expand and web outward, which is exactly what our goals were from this side of the table, from the perspective of, let's make sure that kids are seeing opportunities rather than just what's here. Although we have a great state and a great school system in here, we want to make sure that our kiddos are seeing that there's opportunities all over. So thank you for helping make that possible.
Thank you, ladies. Did a nice job.
Do we do anything for students that aren't going to college, any career planning, counseling, assistance, direction?
Oh, that was the, that day we did.
Say, I'm sorry, say that one more time?
That may not be directed to the two of you, but do we do any kind of career counseling for, for students that aren't going to go to college? Any assistance, even starting earlier than their senior year, so that they get some kind of guidance? Because those kids probably need the most help, because they're not going to college, and they may not have a career plan, and they may need assistance with aptitude they're good for, what their, what their choices are, whether it's apprenticeships, and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I think that is definitely an area we're looking to grow in, but there are a couple things that we do have in place. The Life Game does include students going directly into careers, so that was helpful for them. The ASVAB is also something that we're promoting a lot more, because it's more about career aptitude than just pushing you straight into college. And we also are trying to increase those field trips, where the students get to go out and actually get more hands-on experiences, a better understanding of what the actual workforce looks like. To be honest, when I went to Vanguard, I was not expecting it to be the type of space that it was, and the type of collaborative space, and it's very nice. I'm not going to lie. But I think it was an eye-opening experience for our students to see at every level what options there are. And also, Career Month is open for all grade levels for students to come, and we do have different careers represented, from, you know, not attending any college to two-year. We had, yeah, we had a chef come in. He was actually a college dropout, and talked about why sometimes it's the right decision not to go to college, and talked about his experience owning his own business. He actually is opening up his second restaurant in LA right now, so I think that the students are getting that message. I think that the bigger struggle is getting it out to everyone, because right now, it is optional, and when things are optional in a high school, you don't get as much participation as you'd like, so that's something we're definitely working on as a group.
I'd also like to add that our attendance at the CTC has continued to grow over the years, and the programs over there are certainly geared towards helping students to make that transition straight into work, or if they want to go to, go to schooling beyond high school, that, that, they definitely facilitate that. But we've seen our CTC population and attendance certainly grow, and that's definitely targeting those kids going to those programs.
And we do share regularly on Naviance, different apprenticeship opportunities. Recently, was it Park House? They have a free four-week CNA program that we were promoting to students, and calling different students down to try and get them enrolled in that. They actually offer you a job after you complete the four-year program, or the four-month program, four-week program, oh my gosh, the four-week program. They offer you a job on the spot at the end, so there are different opportunities that we push out to students that way, too.
All right. Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to publicly thank the ladies, our Guidance Department in itself, the amount of work that they do, and these ladies for the work that they do. The Life Game that she's referencing, we had early dismissal that day for snow, so we actually accelerated it, and we got all the students through the program, and they really, I think they still had great benefit, but obviously, it kind of cut some of it a little bit short, so that was just unfortunate, but we do look forward to expanding that and making that become more of a reality. But the, the work hours and the time that these ladies put in, and you can see the statistics that are supporting it, is just really outstanding, and I want to make sure that I thank our counselors in general, and these folks publicly, so they, how much they are appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you. Great job. Committee reports, Curriculum Technology.
Sorry, Brenda, with the paper.
The Curriculum and Technology Committee met on Wednesday, June 6th, at 6:30 in the district office. We started out the evening with two notes of good news. First was regarding Mr. Dan Leepold, who on Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, May 19th through 21st, was a special guest at NASA Wallop in Virginia to experience and preparation for launch of cargo resupply rocket and spaceship destined for the International Space Station. Over those three days, he participated in many adventures and experience topped off by VIP access to watch the 4:44 a.m. launch of the OA-9 rocket into space to the International Space Station. His viewing distance was about 2.3 miles away, which, according to Mr. Leepold, is incredibly close. Mr. Leepold was able to share his experience with the students, and I'm happy to say that it also matched our curriculum, plus it was a great public relations opportunity for our district. There were thousands of applicants to this, and only 32 participants were selected. So NASA must really love the Rams, because he's been down there a couple times so far, so way to go, Dan. If anybody wants to see some of his pictures, or videos, or hear more about his experience, he said, please feel free to contact him. The second newsworthy item is our National Merit Scholarship winner, Yash Sash of Phoenixville, who is intended to study medicine. He was named a finalist winner and will be receiving an award of $2,500. Only 2,500 finalists were chosen from more than 15,000, 15,000 students from around the nation. So this is, again, is a high, high kudos for Springford and for this particular student. We got on directly with the meeting, and the first item of business in curriculum was, we had a presentation from the Art Department. Mr. Chad Strickler gave us a presentation on successes and accomplishments of our K-12 Art Department, seeing the integration of the Art Department with other departments, and that they're highlighting our students' success was absolutely phenomenal. The presentations by the department chairs have been a great addition to our meeting, and have been very informative to the group in general. We moved on to some ELA updates provided by Mrs. Gardi. First Literacy Night was held on May 8th, 14 families attended, and there were several teachers from across the buildings. Kindergarten screening took place on May 21st and 22nd. Participants have been identified and contacted regarding pre-K registration, and the program is set to run June 25th through July 26th. Mrs. Gardi has been making, has been meeting with K-6 ELA facilitators in preparation for next year. We have NWEA mapping and training that was held on May 15th for teachers in five through eight, as we continue to learn more about this powerful assessment tool. Mrs. Gardi and Mrs. Taylor met with colleagues in Pottsgrove School District to learn about the types of reports, and what are their most useful tools are, and how to best meet our needs with this new tool. Mrs. Bass and Mrs. Gardi have met with the non-public schools in Montgomery County and Chester County regarding federal programming. Chester County regarding federal programming. The 2018-19 allotment for Title I, II, and IV will be available later this month. Onward we move to math updates. Mrs. Bass provided the following math updates. Planning continues for the implementation of five and six science resource. The initial training was held on May 15th and teachers are excited about the new resources available with the new series. K-4 math review is beginning. They are currently taking an in-depth look at the current resource and they will begin looking at other possible resources. The goal is to continue to address the rigors of the PA Core while ensuring that a strong emphasis remains on problem-solving and critical thinking. CPM or College Preparatory Mathematics Training continues for Algebra II teachers here at the high school. The STEM Excellence Pathway team met on May 29th. The goal is to, to bring cohesion to our already strong STEM offerings. Interviews and planning continue as they bring Ram Quest program to the 5-6 building. The kindergarten report card will be reviewed this spring and summer to streamline the focus on the most important items for both math and ELA. Other curriculum items of note is that eighth-grade social studies curriculum development is continuing. Ram Quest is ready for the 5-6 building. Patricia Glass will be teaching that. There was a meeting on June 19th, which is tomorrow, to plan for curriculum. Work continues with Act 339 Plan. Much work has been done this month to report new college and career readiness measures which will impact the Future Ready Index. Speaking of the Future Ready Index, we are learning more about this, but according to Kim, not much more. It is slated to be released in mid-October of next year and there will be a data presentation to the board in October. Summer work will be posted on the website this week, as you heard from Nunctonie, it was posted, with a Sky Alert to families. There was a monitor in from PDE that came to audit the Keystone Exams when they were going on, on May 18th in the ninth-grade center as well as the 10-12 building. The results came back and they are meeting expectations. Apparently, the auditor had some suggestions which they will share in the state assessment training for next year. There are several contract renewals that will appear on the agenda, including the TLS, which is Modernized Learning and Other Foundational Training, the MCIU training, which is Hybrid Coaching, and the Virtual High School through the MCIU Consortium. With the technology side of the meeting, we talked about the Time and Attendance Project and the Time and Attendance Project is up and running. There, all non-exempt employees are now clocking in and out. Forty-five clocks are distributed to all the buildings in the district and the last part of the project is automating the Skyward integration and that is currently a manual process. It's being tested in Sandbox, but it will be ready for operation beginning July 1st. The network infrastructure project, the wiring portion of the project is complete. The team is now configuring the development phase of the project. The vendor has received 144 switches and 631 access points have begun being unboxed and configuring the devices. Once complete, they will be delivered to their corresponding schools and this will all be completed by the first day of school next year, this coming school year. There are two new techs, tech support staff that have been hired. Both will begin shortly. Both are on the agenda. The refresh, the board approved the equipment for the refresh in the May meeting and we've submitted for the purchase for the three winners and are in the process of planning for distribution of the equipment. The team is moving forward with Phase Two of the projector project, the projector project, and looking to move to laser version of the interactive projector. This will eliminate the need for changing light bulbs in the future. To note, there were over 100 light bulbs changed last year. And this is what was asked about earlier. This is the item that was on the agenda and in order to get the promotional pricing, the PO needed to be created by June 30th and that is why it was an action item for tonight. And as noted, the installation portion has come off of, as an action item. The teacher laptops were purchased this year, but once the determination was needed as to which model was suitable for the teachers, they needed to hold off on purchasing the docking stations. The determination of the model has been made. So, on the agenda for this month, for the action meeting, on the agenda will be the approval for the docking stations for the computers that have been purchased. There are contract renewals also from the Technology Department and there is a contract with Omega Systems to assist with the network refresh E-rate project. And this will provide us with experienced network engineer for 200 hours to get the project done and it will be paid for out of the technology budget. The next meeting will be on September 6th, Tuesday, Thursday night at 6:30 in the district office. Any questions?
Policy.
So, the policy, so the Policy Committee met on June 11th, Monday, June 11th, 7:30 in the district office. We discussed four policies that night. We did not touch the use of facilities that has been deferred to September 12th during, at which time we will address any comments that have come out of the May 14th meeting. We first talked about the child abuse policy and that is one that has been deferred for some time. So, we did spend a good deal of time on that and did look at the PSBA changes. Lots of comments and that will be cleaned up. We will discuss it again in September. The next one was the nondiscrimination in employment practices. The solicitor needs to look at the language for the notification to the board regarding violations. And once we get that feedback, we'll again look at that in September. The next policy, 906, Public Complaint. We do, after, we did some, we looked at, at that and the addition of some federal programming and procedures for official complaints and that one is on the agenda for tonight for our first read. The next one was 903, which was Public Participation in Board Meetings. That we had looked at before. We went back after getting some feedback about it. We did work the language, rework the language a little bit, but still want the solicitor to take a second look at that. We'll discuss it again in September and then we'll come back again to you at that time. So, and our next meeting will be September 12th and that's where we are for policy. Any questions?
So, Community Relations was the same night prior to policy meeting. Community Relations met. We had an update on the website accessibility. The, the update is that Siteimprove has been the company chosen and that training has started or is getting started underway. Then we moved into RCTV, that accessibility update. And 3Play Media for closed captioning will be the company of choice to address those concerns. Year one would be about $5,000 to cover everything that is existing, all, all the Vimeo's, everything there. And then it would be about $900 each year after that. YouTube would be free and we did present, I did present this before, but that wouldn't cover our existing videos. So, at this point, I believe Andrew is checking with Jim in the business office for budgeting for 2018, 2019. We also had an RCTV graduation update, so some of this is a little bit beyond. I think Andrew did a great job. He had been steadily working and, and just to make sure that everything was ready to go inside and outside and I do believe it went off without a hitch. We also discussed a little bit about something that Erin is working on with Dr. Roach on a speaker series for parents in the community in 2018, 2019. We reviewed some upcoming events, obviously commencement, the Building Mental Health Awareness Together. The Royers Ford Mayor hosted that on June 14th. And some of the reps from Avidem, probably not saying that right, and Resiliency Club did join Erin Crew for that. We talked about Cool School, which started today. Nearly 450 were signed up as of June 11th, so I'm sure there were a few more. Back to Spring Ford Night, big hit will be August 8th this year. Limerick Community Day, August 18th, and Royers Ford Community Day will be in September. The elementary walkthrough will change this year to Thursday, August 23rd. There was also just, as a little aside, Bob Kelly from Fox News did go and do a live broadcast from Oaks and I believe he was there two days. That's right, he was there two days. And I think Mrs. Briggs was the one that was honored in that event. So, thank you very much, Mr. Kelly, for coming out and, and doing that. And thank you, Mrs. Briggs, for your hard work. So, that's where we are. We're going to meet again, not till October. Community Relations will meet in October. And does anyone have any questions?
Finance met Tuesday, June 12th at the district office. We reviewed meeting minute, monthly reports. Right now, a couple of point-outs is that we're still waiting for about $7 million from the state, which will be coming in in July. Expenditures, we're looking good. The one thing is that we haven't transferred the $1.5 million that we earmark each year for capital projects, but we'll be doing that in the near future. So, we're still showing about $29 million expenditures to go. Real estate transfer taxes should come in over budget by the end of the year. We're looking at somewhere between $500,000 to $600,000. And earned income taxes are doing very well as well. Estimate to be about $400,000 over budget. Self-funded health insurance should come in around $500,000 under budget. Food services reflect the three pay month. And meals are up and labor sales are up as well, or labor to sales are up 3%. We did have a conversation regarding food services. We felt that the, the food in the cafeteria is, becomes stagnant and we're looking for something that could give more of a modern feel within the cafeteria to continue to promote those food, those lunch counts. Not sure what that is, but Mr. Fink is going to work with the staff to see what we can do to boast the food services because there will have to be changes in the future, but we don't want those changes just to include raising prices. Other items, to date, the budget has not changed. Mr. Fink notified committee members that before June 30th, there will be money movement from the project to fund the general fund to reimburse expenses paid from the general fund in accordance with the reimbursement solution, resolution approved by the board August of 2017. These project costs pay for the general fund prior to the final approval and are included in the overall project cost related to the high school expansion. The board meant, there will be a change to the Food Services Business Office Secretary recommending going from Level 3 to Level 2. Due to job responsibilities, will only impact the budget about $3,000 to $4,000 and was already figured in. Lastly, we did have a conversation regarding, you know, security and police costs within the district. And we asked Mr. Fink to start working now to understand more detail around potential costs related to us expanding our security force, outsourcing our security force, whatever it might be, maybe, start looking at different options so that we could send funding ideas or concepts so that as we prepare for the following year's budget, we know what we'll be looking at as far as we continue to grow that. And we also did talk about the budget calendar. We are going to, because of the way this keeps happening, us coming in the end of June for approval and please the board members, remember, we need five board members present on next Thursday to vote for the budget. I know that some board members will be calling in, but we do need five board members present at the meeting. And so, what we're going to do next year is have a proposed, a proposed presentation, a proposed budget presentation in April, which will then have us start to set up where we could approve the, the budget at the May work session, which will allow us to then finalize the budget at the June work session, giving two weeks or so leadway instead of us approving the budget late in June and having the bills out July 1st. Last thing, we did talk about as surplus of the budget, we see a surplus, which we're probably going to see a surplus this year because of earned income taxes and the real estate transfer taxes. We're talking about looking at a way that we could develop a strategy where monies could come in, put towards the debt service and being able to pay off the high school expansion with the first call date, which is in basically 4.5 years. If we do that, we'll be able to save this district's hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, that's something that we're going to be working at and presenting to the board as well from finance perspective. Any questions? There will be a meeting in August. Unlike the other committees where, but because of everything that's going on financially related to the high school expansion and that, we're going to be having both finance and property meetings in August. Any questions?
I'd be in favor if we had a surplus to use that towards security now rather than wait.
And that may be one option, but we can't do anything until the budget's signed off on in October, I believe it is? When we, when everything's finalized, Jim? Yeah? Huh? Right, when the audit's done, everything's signed off on, then we could make a determination. So, that's something that, that's why we're, I, we talked about looking at all this so that we can prepare. Any other questions? Property, we met same night, same place, about an hour later. Same bat channel. Old business, reviewed the high school expansion project, ongoing submittal process, everything's on, on target. We were waiting for the final updated contractor schedule. I believe that was in place and sent out to the board or will be part of board packet this week. So, the board has, is totally on board, understanding where we are with scheduling. There was one change order involving steel, but that's being discussed as far as where that responsibility falls. The 5-6 building bathroom devices are scheduled for delivery and installation probably over the summer. There is discussion of relocating the conference room at the district office to allow for a smoother transition of student registration as well, inclusion of IT personnel. And that, that's moving forward as well. That's being done in-house and that will be done over the summer as well. New business, revised, there was conversation around us getting information related to video scoreboard at the Ram McMally Stadium. We're gathering that information. There's a motion on the agenda for us to hire a consultant to provide all the details as far as if we want to move forward, what that would look like. We did review the purchase of another police vehicle with the accessories, which will be in place before the start of school year. There was a presentation reviewing types of window coverings for classrooms. That's one of the topics as far as classroom doors that have glass in them or windows in them. There's different companies are proposing where you could actually have something close off and, and cover the glass or the window in the doors in vent of some, of some situation occurring in the schools. Review the current work order. Oh, there, with Robert coming on staff, we are looking at the, the current work order system and going to make, he's going to come back with a recommendation to look at bringing in a newer system that will be more conclusive, supportive of what they're doing on their day-to-day activities. There was discussion of fencing at Ram Stadium around the dugouts for the home and visitor side. And I believe that we're going to move forward with, and again, you'll see that on the agenda, putting a fence barrier in front of the dugouts at the, at the field. Other businesses, there's ongoing conversations regarding batting cages that Babe Ruth is going to donate. So, that's going to be moving forward as well. And like I said, the actual items were on the agenda this evening. So, like I said, we're going to be meeting in August because of the, the high school expansion and other things going on. Any questions? Assistant Superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. DeBella. I want to share with everyone that although school is out for the summer, Spring Ford schools were extremely busy today with all sorts of activities, learning, and summer fun. In addition to the large number of building projects, improvements in the normal summer cleaning led by our talented facilities and operation team, we had a dedicated group of teachers here this morning at 8 o'clock at the high school that were participating in professional development tied to modernizing learning. So, our curriculum department also had folks at the district office today working on curriculum revisions and setting up for a successful and productive summer already. Our technology team started last week and we're back at it today with both hardware and soft, software upgrades and improvements. And our gyms were jam-packed today with summer camps for boys and girls basketball. I may have missed something along the lines, but also Cool School, which was already mentioned by Mrs. Zizowski. It's not too late. If you have students interested in Week 2 or Week 3 of Cool School, that information is there. Couple other dates, August 1st is our standard date now for parents to begin signing up for first day verification and first day packet information to get access to, that'll be available August 1st. And the big release information, K-4 classroom and homeroom teachers are released on August 15th at 3 o'clock. Fifth through eighth grade homeroom teachers and schedules on August 16th at 3 o'clock. And then ninth to 12th grade students And then ninth to 12th grade student schedules, including lunch periods, on August 17th at three o'clock. We staggered those as in last year, so we have an easier flow of information, not have a jam-packed, locked-up, tearful teenager at our, at our homes. So that's the end of the report.
Great, any questions? Solicitor's report.
I have no report this evening.
You're awesome. All right. Meeting minutes, A and B, any questions? Personnel, A through P. Finance, A through I. Property, A through C.
Have a comment on A. The estimate that I heard for a video scoreboard would be 100,000 plus, rather than spend $3,500 to, and have our resources for our facilities people spend time on that. I think we should see if the board has an appetite to spend that kind of money, because I haven't seen what the benefit to actually doing that would be, to have that kind of thing. We have football games, people don't go to the game to watch a video scoreboard, they go to watch the game.
Any other questions? Programming and curriculum, A through J. Other business, A through E.
Can you give us some background on A as to what the gifted independent study program is that the student is applying for?
I don't have the specific information for that student's GIP, which I probably wouldn't be able to share anyway, according to the solicitor in my ear over here. But as a part of that policy 118, that's we have need board approval for students to go into the independent project.
So what does it mean though? What is that?
Well, it allows them to take an independent project under the, under the supervision of a, their gifted support teacher, and it will count as credit towards their, their programming based upon their individual GIP.
Dawn, is it, it's sort of like a thesis that they do. It's a year-long thesis.
Also on, under E, as I had said earlier in the report on policy, we are not putting policy 903, public participation in board meetings in this time. We're removing that for a first read until we consult further with the solicitor and modify the language in the September meeting. So 903 is removed.
I was going to make sure of that.
Any other comment regarding this? More comment?
I just, excuse me, I just have one thing to share. Norristown School District and School Board is actually leading an initiative on Friday, June 22nd at two o'clock in the, at the courthouse to oppose Senate Bill Two. Again, it'll be in Norristown. If anybody is interested, I do have a flyer. I don't know a lot of background, that's as much as we received, but just to share. You know, we've been taking steps and trying to oppose this. And so it's not a bad idea to try to work together with, with other districts. But again, if anybody is interested, I'd be happy to share the information.
Any other board comment? So earlier, I did receive unfortunately a resignation letter from Mr. Bernard Pettit, who will be relocating in the very near future to outside of the Springfield area school district, more importantly, Region One. And according to school code, although we enjoy and love having Mr. Pettit on the board and all his influence and knowledge that he's brought with him over the years, he will not be able to continue to sitting on the board. So with that, unfortunately, and upsettingly, I need to make a motion for this board to accept Mr. Pettit's resignation, which will be effective this evening.
Second.
Motion to second, any comment? All in favor, say aye. Aye. So with that, I also would like to make a motion to the board and appoint Kelly Sputzer to fill Mr. Pettit's seat and not go through the process of interview or anything like that, because Ms. Sputzer has sat on the board. She's only been removed a few months. She's very knowledgeable as far as what's going on to, is that Rain?
Yes, Rain.
Wow. She's very knowledgeable to what's going on from a school perspective, school board Kelly was very influential in heading up policy and making some, you know, significant changes to the policies. Huh?
Can't hear you.
And, um...
Can't hear you.
You can't hear me? No, no, turn the mics up. Now you need the mics. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kelly Sputzer to the board for fill, filling the remaining term of Mr. Pettit in Region One.
I would second that and just based on...
I didn't ask for comment. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Got to follow the protocol, because Mr. Fitzgerald will jump over. Second. All right, I have a motion second. Any comment?
I have a comment. I threw that out there because Kelly, when she was here, she was great. She was a mentor for me on here and she brings her knowledge, experience and her contributions to the board as a whole and to the different committees were very beneficial to all of us here. So I hope it happens. Thanks.
Do we have any other comment?
I agree.
All right, we'll have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed. Well, welcome to the board, Kelly. Thank you. With that, do we have public comment? Sure. Please state your name for the record and your address.
Oh my God, there's a huge bug. That's, I mean, that's just not even funny. What, what is it?
No, it wasn't a cricket, was it? I had all my glasses on, it looked like it was. My name is Kelly Sputzer. I am a resident of Royersford. I am thrilled to be nominated for Burn's now open position. The board won't be the same without you, because this is all I've known is with you on the board, the board. But I am very excited to come back and I think that my short time away from the board will help lend to jumping right back in. So thanks, I'm very excited.
Thank you, Kelly. Any other comment? Joe Cerisi, Limerick, I don't know, many of you may not know me. So I live off of the road over here. I want to congratulate Kelly back to the board. Served with you for a long time. I know you'll do a great job once again and look forward to seeing you at this table. But tonight I wanted to come and I put a little thought into what I was going to say once, for once. I was thinking about, it was Father's Day yesterday and Burn has been a founding father of the school board. A father to most of us, yeah, a great-grandfather to some of us. But we've had a lot of great years with Burn and the contributions he's made to the school district will last a long time in your 40 years on the school board, I think it was, or 50, I can't remember. But I, when I first got on the board, Burn was my mentor and he was also board president. And he made a lot of changes way back when that are still here today. And one of them was community relations. I was sitting here thinking about that. And we had a long conversation after one of my first meetings and you put the Community Relations Committee in place, which has done an unbelievable job and we call in at the lead now. It's really taken it far and it will go much further. You also gave inspirational graduation speeches that I wish Tom and I would have followed. Congratulations, thank you, goodbye, and that was it. But all kidding aside, I'm going to get serious. You will be very missed in this school district and I hope that the public understands and knows what your contributions were here. You never had a child go through this district, but you were loyal to the district. You came every meeting, you participated, you cared about Springfield and its community. And I will miss you here, but I know as a friend, you'll be here for a long time. So thank you for your service.
Thank you for the kind words.
I could do it after the meeting adjourns. Well, wait, hang on a second. All right, well, a couple of things, couple, before we adjourn, if everybody could just bear with me a second. So when I, when I found out that we were going to have to do this, I asked Ms. Fern and once again incredibly, she was able to pull this off in a very short period of time. Oh my God.
But I got a knife.
Does anybody have a knife? That's, no, is the right answer to that question.
I think in fairness that Kelly should have to give her Ram to Burn.
Well, she doesn't get another one, maybe we'll update the plate, but that's it. Oh my God, seriously? Dawn, give your report again, give me a second.
I gave two at the same time you did. Two committees, remember that.
Huh? Well, I want to present it to them. You should keep that wrapped. So do you have any closing, don't, don't adjourn, because I have to do one other thing.
I just want to say thank you to the board and everybody. And for the past years, it's been a pleasure serving Springfield community and the Springfield, Springfield School District. The students had priority and still continue to have priority for the entire board and it was a pleasure serving with all of you. Thank you very much. And we have a great administration, we have a great teacher corps, and I was very proud to be on this board for the past number of years. Thank you.
Mr. Pettit, I just want to remind you that the folks at Dirty Nellies are still talking about you.
So Kelly, this is going to be a first. Mr. Fitzgerald has informed me that we should swear you in this evening. And I'm actually allowed to do that. So I'm going to bring you up, if you don't mind, and we're going to swear you in. Left hand, right hand up, there you go. All pictured, all pictured. Above, because I wasn't expecting to do this. All right, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
That I will support...
That I will support...
Obey and defend...
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth...
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth...
And that I will discharge duties of my office...
And that I will discharge the duties of my office...
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I got the one up, Mr. Cerisi on that one, he never did that. So with that, I don't want anybody to say any, oh, he can. He can, he can, he can...
Motion to adjourn.
He could say it, go ahead.
He could, yeah. Dawn, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Meeting adjourned.